And so. Bring that up. So what I gave everyone, so we can start talking about the. So what we did is we took a look at all of our streets in the city. Just and this is just looking at the apple, right? So this isn't the curb gutter and sidewalks. And so we just said, based on, you know, we roughly have about two point five million a year. To spend on street reconstruction. With that. And when you look at that, that two point five million and you say my arterial roads, my heavier volume roads have a thicker protection. A lot of it costs more money than my local roads. But when you break that down. And we just look at that and say, here's what that cost or here's how often we can. Replace our roads. It's about fifty years, a little over fifty years. On there. So if we were to just go through with that budget. And go through and reconstruct our roads on that basis, it would be about every two. On that. And so if you look at, and this is what pave the life cycle. So generally. Roads are designed to a twenty year life cycle. Right on it, where you would go through. So this kind of shows, right? Your pavement condition index. So you start off brand new road, a hundred percent. Over time, it's gonna, it's gonna drop off and then drops off rapidly as you get out further years. Now these other little bumps up there is when you do. Maintenance on it. So whether you put in a chip seal or your crack ceiling, because really what you're trying to do is make sure that the water doesn't go down through. And destroy your base, contaminating your base, and then that goes out. And so that kind of helps extend that that life out with doing overlay. On that, or we do a crafts project, we will rise it and then just put asphalt on it. So that extends that life out further. But generally, you're looking at a twenty year. On that, even with those, generally, they would say, well, in five years, you can do a chip seal. In fifteen years, an overlay and twenty years. Obviously, we don't. Live in that ideal world when we have to extend our streets even further. We have lots of streets that. Are well beyond. Twenty forty years, right? That we haven't been in.
Does that twenty year, twenty years take into account our climate? Because our climate's really hard on the streets.
Yeah, so, yeah, it, I mean, it's a general look, I would say. So, yeah. When we have lots of freeze lava cycles, things like that, that's harder and we'll see that deterioration happen. Especially as a moisture. Right? Anytime you have ponding water, that's probably the worst. Situation you have because it's vehicles drive over that, that hydrostatic force of that tire pushing that water down into the asphalt. Then starts blowing out that asphalt and we get those potholes forming. And so I know people like to drive through puddles. I'm always like, please avoid puddle. Because that will destroy our roads faster. And so, so you can kind of see what those costs are. If we look down at the bottom, we can, we we kind of built in what it costs. Like for a block of local roads, collective roads and arterial roads, right? So you can see it goes up substantially. For each block, just because of the cross section, how much asphalt of those higher volume runs. And so that kind of lets you know what that cost is when you go to the next.
So is the combination, the cost differences like for arterials, because they're busier. You have to like do a thicker layer of asphalt.
Yeah, so in our, our main roads, we're doing four inches asphalt versus a local road where you're doing two and a half.
Okay.
And then also to your base cross section. Right? So we'll do like a twenty inch of brand new borrow, six inches of three quarter of road base than that, that asphalt. Now, where do the funding sources come from? So a lot of, a lot of times I get a lot of questions like, well, why don't other cities do L I Ds? Right? And so if you look, you know, this is from, from Matt. You look at, right, property and sales tax revenue and you look at Rexburg versus like Idaho Falls. Or Twin Falls, because that's what a lot of times people will compare to and say, well, they don't do L I Ds. You know, why does Rexburg do L I Ds? And so you can see the disparity in the, in the property and sales tax revenue. That comes into. Versus the other, the other cities. And this, right, goes back to what, I can't remember what date it was in the seventies. You remember that when they fixed the. Three percent increase. But I think back to, right, small towns that are fast growing. Have been penalized by that, right? You can't. Necessarily with that, with that three percent growth that other cities. And so let's go to the next slide. And so when we look at our revenue sources, where did, where does our money come from? And this is the bulk of them. Obviously, there's other ones like grants and things that that come in, but those are kind of one time. So you look at the, the top portion, we'll get franchise fees. So we got Rocky Mountain Power, which is a big one. That comes in, you got intermount gas, Fall River Electric, Able One. So those would be kind of the, the franchise fees agreements we have for them to. In there. And then also, we, we also do, it's like a franchise fee, if you will. The right away maintenance charge that we charge, water, sewer, and our sanitation department. So those funds come into the street out of, out of those other funds. And then you look at the state fuel tax, right? And that's based on population. And so the higher our population is, the more revenue we're gonna get from state fuels tax. Now, if you look at the next one down, the county road and bridge property tax. So. If you remember, we all pay property taxes to the county, right? And so this, this. Portion of it goes to the county and anything in the city, the county refunds back to the city fifty percent. Right? So we get fifty percent from the road and bridge tax that city residents pay and we get fifty percent back. And if you look at it, it's, it's, it's a levy rate and the county has been dropping that levy rate. Over the past several years. If you look in twenty nineteen, I know it's probably hard to read. With that red, but we, we were getting nine hundred and two thousand dollars. Right? And you look at twenty twenty five, our budget is two hundred and seventeen thousand. Dollars on that. So that's almost a seven hundred thousand dollar decrease. Each year. Right? That we're not getting that revenue because they've lowered, obviously, the county has their budget that they're trying to balance well. And the road and bridge, they've lowered. That levy rate. So we don't get as much money back on.
So help me understand that just a little bit. So the county has lowered the overall levy rate. And, and we are then, then, and we get fifty percent of that?
Yeah, we get fifty of the road and bridge tax, right? And so they, they can max out that levy rate that we, the whole two. Window two. I can't remember, but they, so. The way they do it, so they, they can, they're not lowering their budget by any notes. They're simply shifting it from the street. Into something else. And when I looked at it, I, I looked at it from like seventeen to twenty twenty two. Their major shift has occurred in their justice. It's went up like forty seven percent five years. And they've reduced what they're putting into their streets by like thirty something. And justice for them is, is basically sheriffs. And so what they've done is, I think they've just. Probably came to the conclusion that, that they don't need as much as trees. They need it more in other areas like justice. And so they simply.
We had that conversation with them that that's not, not the case in the city?
Yes. Yeah, I've, I've talked with them. I mean, obviously, they have their budget process, but. I've talked with them over the past several years. Trying to say, is there a way?
If we need to show up on doing that particular part of the budget.
Well, it's probably bringing the county commissioners and having.
Conversation.
Maybe a deeper conversation on that than, than me just mentioning, say, hey, this is really been dropping. Is there any way we can kind of hold that so we don't continue to drop? Obviously, it's, you know, it's been dropping a hundred thousand a year and that definitely affects, right, our, our budget. But the street reconstruction.
Is that fifty percent that comes back? Does that number arbitrary? I mean, how did that, or is that?
State statute. It's, so basically, the road and bridge tax, state statute says fifty percent. That comes out of the city has to. Has to come back.
Has to come back. But they then have the freedom to re-label funds that.
They have level rates, right? That they can max, max out, right? And so, but their budget falls underneath those levy rates. So they move those levy rates around and say. Oh, this levy rate is now going to be, if it was point two for the streets, right? This, this levy rate was like point one seven, now it's. All the way down to like point one one or point oh seven.
And then they can raise another levy rate.
But they're capped at like a certain one, like I, I want to say the. What's one that, quartz one was like point four or something. So there's, there's different ones, but, but yeah, they can play with those. Underneath those letter rates.
So is there an overall total that they can't go above, or is there a cap on how much they can increase it per year?
Well, they're, they're still, they're driven the same way we are. So you have to remember, everything's driven by a bunch of them. And they are still held to the three percent increase per year plus new construction plus the annexation. I guess, yeah, they wouldn't have one percent, but for us. And so, so basically, that's why levy rates are so tricky, right? Because levy rates, they change all the time. But, but the budget. Is generally the same plus three percent or more each year. And then your, the other component, of course, is your assessed value is changing. And the assessed value in the budget then dictate levy rate, right? But where they have control, right, is just, just like we do, we, instead of us going out and saying, hey, we're gonna establish a levy rate. Police, ambulance, recreation and parks. Every year, divided up that way, we bring our property taxes into the general fund. As one full. And then we go out in budget to make more of those services. And then, of course, we have transfers that go out to additional services as well. Whereas they are basically saying, this is what we have to work with. And they're probably saying, we have a greater need in justice, the streets. We're gonna move it there. That help.
And every dollar they move out of there, they get to keep fifty percent of it. Essentially.
Yeah, and you have to remember.
Or keep a dollar and fifty percent. The whole thing, because they no longer have to send us fifty percent.
If they, if they move it, then they don't have to send us fifty percent.
And you, and you have to remember, it's only, they're only sending back fifty percent. That's collected by the city residents.
But again, a change in the levy numbers, they're essentially moving those funds laterally.
So it's not that they can charge the maximum, maximum levy amount in road and bridge and then reallocate it. They're adjusting the levy rate to compensate for whatever budgeting demands they have.
Yeah, and I, I mean. Maybe if you looked into it, maybe they have lowered their budget in streets. I, I can't necessarily say they haven't, because maybe they have. I, I think they have. Look at that, right?
Oh, yeah, because as we've taken over the streets.
Their levy rate.
But, but I guess what I, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't know if they've lowered it. Their overall budget by lowering that. I mean, that, they could be that. That's their choice, right? And so I, that would have to be a little deeper conversation. So that's why I kind of wanted to cover that, so you guys have a understanding. We're gonna go to the next one.
I've also got a real quick question before you go on, actually. It shows that the budget for twenty twenty five is four point seven million. But here we've got two point five million, so.
So that's overall budget for a street department. Two point five is just the road renaissance.
Okay, so other things would be like snow removal and, okay, just making sure I'm understanding.
Aspects. Yeah, no, that's a very good question. Impact fees has its own fun. You do have a lot of new street projects as well.
Because like right around nine million for, if you include like the new stuff, some years hasn't it been?
Yeah, sometimes it's nine, sometimes it's eleven. And, and the reason for that is. Yeah, sometimes we'll have huge projects. So like in the last couple of years, it's had a ton of projects, which have been in billions, right? And so those are showing up as a street budget number. But it's revenue coming in from like. All right. So what are, what are the strategies the city employs, right, to help pay for these roads, right? Obviously, LEDs are one that we employ, right? Because obviously, we don't have enough funds. The second one is. Is trying to get the county, right, to increase back up that levy rate. So we can capture those funds and utilize those for street reconstruction. And then some of the other ones, right? Obviously, we talked about that state fuel tax. So higher density. Right? Without expanding our road system benefits us, right? So when we went after. Right? Really trying to get the census data correct, right? So it shows that population. That helped us out a ton because that bumped up that state fuels tax that we get. And so anytime we're looking at densities, I know a lot of people don't like. Seeing higher densities, but there is a benefit that comes with that higher density. As long as we're not. Getting more and more roads, right? So as we can, if we can develop on existing roads that we have, that's a benefit, right? But not that that's the only way, right? The city develops. I'm not saying, oh, that's, we should only do that, but. But it is something that is a direct benefit to our, our cities, right? And the other aspect, or go ahead.
But isn't that only to a certain point? Because even if you don't have to make more roads, if you stick open to people on one road and then it's. Maxed out. And at some point, you have to build that.
Yes.
Point about the higher density.
Yeah, so you, you're gonna have to build up those, those roads. They're gonna deteriorate faster with more vehicles you have on the road. Yes.
And be widened and all these kinds of things.
Yeah, so there'd be some other things that go in with, with the higher density. But generally speaking. Higher densities to a point are beneficial for our city, especially if we can. Have them downtown or areas like that, right? That, that benefit us, especially around the college campus. Right? Obviously, that's a good thing. If we have kids that can walk back and forth and don't have the vehicle traffic coming and going. So those, those definitely are, are beneficial aspects of it. Other areas, right, that you can look at, obviously, there's the ability to go after a bond. Right? And that would be obviously another tax on our. Property owners here, right? We got a bond for that. One of the other strategies we've been trying is narrowing roads. Now, we do have Stone Bridge subdivision, that. Addition that's going on. We did do a narrower road cross section. For that, that we're allowing in there. So that should help us long term, because as we have less asphalt to maintain. And that's beneficial, right? Because we don't necessarily need. Parking on both sides of the street. Now, there's some places where people are like, oh, I have lots of cars. I want to have parking. But if you were to drive around most neighborhood subdivisions. There's not that many cars parked, parked on the streets. And yet we have a lot of asphalt. And then also, we, we go after grants, right? And those are always. Areas like this. Last year, we got a two million dollar grant from state. So that helps bolster our road. Reconstruction button with that. And then the last one is just if we could ever get a. Estate, a special sales tax. But we know that's, that's a long shot, but there's also a lot of competing interests, right, on that? If you had that additional one cent sales tax, right, I'm sure, right, we'd have. Or there would be like parts of X, right? There would be, in the general fund, there would be competing first. All that. So, so anyways, those are some of the. Long-term strategies that we've been. Trying to employ to bolster our street. But. Now with that, that's just kind of gives us the background you wanna. Go to the next part. So here's the resolution, right, that we. Did in. Twenty twenty? Yeah, I was like, it's been a while. So where we do, we, we went to the thirty percent. Right? So that way, as those costs escalated, which we have seen. That we also increased proportionately our share. And so with that, right, we have the sidewalk. So this is all stuff that's been installed. And so. I remember when we were talking about the current L I D and you're looking at it, it's like, well, that doesn't look like a thirty percent increase. Well, that property didn't have sidewalk. And so there's, the city doesn't participate. In that new sidewalk because they haven't installed it. And so just like all the homeowners said, new subdivisions are putting in their sidewalk. So areas that don't have sidewalk, we don't participate thirty percent. Because that would be. Since costs that we just don't do and like those new subdivisions going in. As we come through and reconstruct. Now, we try and. I mean, the ways we go about getting new sidewalk in, right, is when property changes hands. Because that's a, a great time, because they're already financing it and they can work out the cost with the property owner that's buying it from. And then the second is when we do a street reconstruction project, if there's not sidewalk, then we're required to go in. But there's, there's no participation from the city on that side.
Wait, so you're saying even in the older places where there was no sidewalk, we're not helping at all? So that's why some of those are so astronomical.
Yes, that, that's why there's, that's why you don't see, like, when you look across, you're like, there's a little bit, that, that doesn't look like thirty percent.
But why can't we? I mean, I, I understand what you're saying with the new, but I guess that just doesn't make sense to me that we wouldn't help. Some with that too.
Okay, so, so I, I think the concern would be like a new subdivision going in and person puts in their house. Are we gonna help them with their sidewalk? Because it's not in.
Well, yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I just, to me, I see that, I view that differently because. A lot of the places where there is no sidewalk, that is where the income needs are.
Not so much the older parts of town.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm saying. So we're not helping them at all. And people in a new subdivision typically.
Well, we're not helping them either. They're paying for it themselves.
I know, but, but I'm talking about if we're talking about in, income disparities, the people who need the most help are getting no help.
Not always. There are some areas that don't have sidewalk that, that are up on the hill that are.
But I'm talking about the one we were talking about like last time. That, that explains one huge reason I wasn't understanding why those bills are so.
Yeah.
Large, because we're not helping.
Yeah, you, you can't get into, you know, the. Fairness doctrine, right? Where, you know, if, if, if we're doing it for this person, you know, we, we need to. Always try to treat people the same as much as we can. You know, if we're, if we're not helping. You know, you know, we've got a young family moving into a new subdivision. You know, they don't have a ton of money either, but they're paying for the whole new sidewalk and going in front of their house because of that's. And the cost of their home, you know, when, when they buy it from the. From the, what you call it, or, or sometimes they'll pay for it themselves. Or they'll do it themselves. And so these people have those same opportunities. They can either do it themselves. Or. Or just pay a contractor. But so it's kind of, you're, you're treating everybody the same.
Yeah, but I don't know if everyone, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think it goes, it goes into the income, right, leveled out. Right? Because I want to make sure, right, everybody understands kind of how we're doing that. And so I appreciate.
Well, I, I mean, I was here for this and I didn't understand that you weren't, that that says we're not helping people who didn't already have.
Yeah.
When I voted on it, I didn't understand.
Okay, no, that's, that's good to know. So obviously, we want to make sure things are clear when you guys are voting.
How do cities that. Don't do L I Ds, how do they handle new construction? Do they generally require the new construction to put in sidewalks? And then if those sidewalks then need to be replaced sometimes in the, sometime in the future, the city then takes care of the cost of the sidewalks? How is that? Generally done in, on the other side of this?
Other side, cities that don't do L I Ds, right? And so. Yeah, depending on how they want. Sometimes I know Idaho Falls, sometimes we'll come in and say, hey, we'll. Will participate some way, or they try and work it without doing an L I D. Right? Or they might just say, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do that, right? So you can come in and say, right, as a city. Right? They might just come and say, we're gonna do curb and gutter and street. We're not gonna, we're not gonna mess with the sidewalk other than the federal. Code that says, you've got to, if you're doing, if you're reconstructing the street, you've got to do the ADA handcaps, bring, bring them up to current standards. Right? And so, I mean, we're under the same things. If we come in and redo a street, obviously, you want to do the curb and gutter because you're drainage. You get the water away, so you're not destroying the street, not having those ponds. And so you want to take care of that. Now, the sidewalks, right, is how far do you want to let them deteriorate? How far do you want that neighborhood? Sidewalk and the ability for people to travel up and down. Now, there is. Protection against the cities generally, if there's a lawsuit that happens, even though it's on the city's property, the lawsuit goes against the homeowner. For that, if there is a tripping hazard or something happens. And so, so, yeah, so there's those balances and, and some cities. Will just, you know, obviously, everybody's constrained by budgets. And so some cities will just be like, this is what we're gonna, what we're gonna do.
But they still require new construction to put in their own sidewalks. Everybody, that's pretty much standard everywhere. It's just the, what do we do when we get to a situation?
And there might be some cities that may, may just say, well, we're, we're not requiring sidewalks in this zone, right? I mean, obviously, we have a zone where, right, that. The R one zone, where we don't require a sidewalk. We say that's a, that's gonna be a very low volume, not as many on the street, one acre lots. So we're not, we're gonna utilize the street as the sidewalk.
No, I was driving, I took a drive the other night and went down Park Street from Seagull to Pioneer, and then I went on Fifth West. I didn't go to the other one. I keep, it was getting too dark to see. And from what I could see, other than Fifth West, where there aren't any sidewalks on, on some of those properties. But like Park Street from Seagull down, the sidewalks look great to me. Of course, I'm not. An expert in any of this. So are those going to be changed? Are they only going to be changed? I mean, how is that determination made?
Yeah, so we have standards that we put together that we look at and say, you know, if there's a tripping hazard, right, that's one standard. If there's so many cracks, if it's spall off the top, right, it becomes the hazardous. Situation, those are ones that we say, okay, this needs to be replaced. So we just go through and say, these are the ones that meet the criteria for replacement. Now, there's one ADA, right? When we look at it, and that's the cross slope. And that gets us. In a world of trouble, because two percent is not much of a cross slope. Like, I bet most of you would not be able to tell if that was a two or a three percent. Or one and a half percent cross slope without putting that level on. When we put the level on, it's like, oh, that's a two point three, it's out of spec. Right? And so those, those ones can be really challenging. But generally speaking, we're just trying to look at, and I mean, obviously, there's driveway approaches when the sidewalk's right against the curb. It, it's blatantly obvious, yeah, that, that doesn't meet the ADA requirements. And that's why we've got to go through. Redo their driveway approach. And we got to go into their driveway. Right? Because we're gonna have to lower it to get it within spec. And so then you gotta adjust their driveway. So there's lots of things that we have to look at. And it's unfortunate, right? Because those are some of the federal requirements that also drive what we have to do. So, so, yeah, so there's lots of. Different things. And that's why that thirty percent, I want to go to the next. Slide, so. So we looked further into this. This is the one that Noah had brought up. And we used to be eligible for this. We're not anymore. So this was for those low income earners. So it's only for rural areas. And we, we've been taken out of that, that. Unfortunately, this is not available. For our residents. So apply for it. They're in a low income situation.
Because it's about growth and there's.
Okay, so let's bring up the spreadsheet. So looking at the spreadsheet, right, this is just based on the. Current L I D. So these numbers would change for different L I Ds, L I Ds depending on what we have happening. But we just. What we have happening, but we just looked at a couple of different options on that. Okay, um so. The current one, right, is we would be, we'd go. Where's the cities, the hundred and change to like an eighty five percent or? Can you go one more over? Is there?
When you say current one, are you talking about the one that we're getting?
Let's say, yeah, the one that we're having here. So this is that one. Okay, right there. That's what I do with the city share. Sorry. That's that's what I was looking for. I was like, where did the city share go? It's just being blocked, right? Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so so if you look at current L I Ds without purge on there. Um so the city's share in the curb and gutter and sidewalk replacement is a hundred and seventy six now. Right? That's that's what we would be putting into that. The curb and gutter and sidewalk. Um and so it's interesting when we look at the. Local roads, right, that's about a block. It's it's funny how these numbers came in. Right? And so that's if we continue with that thirty percent, Sasha, that's what it looks like, right? And then we looked and said, well, what if we did? Went to the fifty percent, right, which we did, we have in our policy if we're narrowing the road, right? Let's say we're not narrowing the road, we just look at a fifty percent. Right? Then the city's participation on that would be two hundred and eighty eight pounds. On that, which is interesting because that's about a block of a collector room. Um and then if we look at and I just said, well, what if what if the city did took the curb and gutter a hundred percent and we didn't participate? In the sidewalk at all, what does that look for? Like, how much, how much more money do we? Do we put in there? And that's about four hundred and fifty one thousand six hundred. So that's almost a block of an arterial road.
So, sorry, but it's real hard to compare when you compare percentages to absolute dollar amounts. So the city shares a hundred and seventy six, three hundred at thirty percent. But what is fifteen percent? What is that? The property owners' cost? What's what's the dollar effect, dollar figure?
The property owner's dollar figure?
Yeah.
So that's at nine ninety seven, it's almost a million. Right? So if you look at the thirty percent, if you just go straight down, a hundred and seventy six total, that's all of them combined on that.
Oh, I can I can read that. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, but thanks for the question, right? I want to make sure.
I thought we all prepared.
Okay.
Then when it says thirty percent, when it says city share fifteen percent, I'm just a little confused.
Yeah, I I I see what you're saying. Okay. Yeah, that's a little bit.
Fifty percent, twenty five percent.
Yeah, so so looking at, and that's. You want to click on that cell, that fifteen percent? Where did that fifteen percent, what's that referring to, Noah?
That's that's fifteen percent of the total.
Yeah, the total. So fifteen percent of the total cost between the two, but that's right.
How come that's thirty and that's fifteen? My mind's blown.
Yeah, no, no, that's that's a good question, right? So there's a lot on there that we're not participating.
Because we're not helping with.
Right, because the, yeah, they don't have. Yeah, real side. So that's why, that's why you see that discrepancy. So that's a good question.
Yeah, so so on these, that's not actually at thirty percent helping, then it's fifteen percent helping.
Yes, in in the step size.
On the whole, on the whole picture.
Yeah, on the whole, on the whole picture, right? So it is, it's thirty percent on what our policy is that we help out.
Thirty percent on the sidewalk and the curb and gutter.
If it's.
But then for those, for the for the one part, it's. That's just because some of us didn't have a sidewalk.
Yes, yeah, no, so I appreciate coming to that. Definitely want to make sure things are clear of like, okay, this is why. It's not a true thirty percent on there is because there's there's quite a bit of sidewalk that isn't along that street. And then that's why you also see it, why it's not a fifty percent on the other one. Right? Because we we wouldn't be helping out on that. So that's based on how that policy works. So now we can kind of see different. Ramifications of make. Choice to do a higher rate, and we can even go over a little more, and we can. Uh Noah put picked one up just to say. We can put in a different percentage and you can see how it affects the different shares.
Yeah, if we go thirty five percent, what's that?
But but this does not address those who have no sidewalk.
No. So that would.
Their scale of a hundred.
That would be a change of policy, right? And so that that would be the.
And are we gonna talk? Because I thought for this meeting, so is that what we're doing next is talking about?
Yeah, that's why I was, I'm always looking at the plug, right? So we can, because I want to make sure we have enough time. So I think. Spencer or Matt, if you guys want to talk about the low income, right? And that and saying kind of what your thoughts were on that.
So based on the conversation that we have, I lost that task. Uh into looking at city statute and trying to figure out if uh. What would preclude us uh from providing a subsidy or reducing the rates paid by certain individuals? And so uh. I'll just cut right to the chase and then go some of the justification of of why I think the law. Um actually prohibits this. And so the law, the law here provides a method for uh repayment and. Providing a payment plan, uh but the the statute considered the Idaho law uh with. Um L I Ds does not allow or speak to a full reduction. Uh or a subsidized rate on local improvement districts if you apply. Or if you choose to uh use L I Ds. And so uh the most uh. The idea, I'm not sure it was mentioned in this meeting, uh but uh what would be looked at would be. Um the circuit breaker program uh for reduction of property tax. Yeah, where there are those by state law that can qualify for that. Uh but again, when you dig into that state statute, Idaho code sixty three, seven, one, one. It's cancellation of taxes, uh but it specifically mentions and uh states that. Property tax reduction benefits won't reduce solid waste irrigation or other fees charged by government. And so when you look wider uh into other jurisdictions, there isn't another jurisdiction in the state of Idaho. Uh I believe it's just because it's precluded by state code that that does this, that. Uh tries to have their own reduction of L I D fees. State of Washington, they specifically, within their circuit breaker type legislation. Uh they include special assessments. And so their code in the state of Washington, uh it is a deferral of special assessments and or property taxes. And they speak specifically uh to having a categorized individual, uh categorized. A segment of the population who may be able to permanently defer their L I D payments. Our state code. Does not speak to that, and no one else does that. Uh when I get into it, and then I hold the precedent from. Uh the most commonly cited uh litigation that uh was argued. Revolving around L I Ds, uh that is a like. Nineteen eighty six case from the city of Moscow. And they uh talk about uh what is fundamental to assessment law. And they say it is fundamental to assessment law in order to uh. Properly assess costs of an improvement to an effective property, the property must receive a special benefit. One that is more intense and then is received by the rest of the municipality. And so they don't look at it as a tax, they look at it as a benefit. Meaning, so if you turn, if you view it in terms of a benefit, creating a system where the subject, where there's a subjective approach. Uh to who participates and who does not, uh it could undermine uh what is fundamental to assessment law. That is, you pay more because ultimately you are receiving more. And so issues or challenges with that, I think comes from two fronts. One. Um from those who are in the L I D or participating in it and actually paying. Them saying, hey, if they have to pay, if they don't have to pay, why do I? And then number two, from constituents within the community or not a part of the L I. Where they're not paying anything, then the person also received more, received a benefit. Or three, and I did not receive that extra benefit. And so I think that's possibly could be the justification. And then I think it ties back to also there is a material uh improvement. Uh not just a weighting of taxes, there's a a material improvement uh of uh the specific property. Um and so ultimately, uh when we look at it, it's not a tax, they look at it as a special benefit. And if we choose, i- if we choose to participate in L I Ds. We have to do what by state statute, state statute would not permit us uh to be able to subsidize. Good question there.
One thought that we did have on the state real quick, if you want to pull that up. Um so, I mean, this doesn't help upfront. But where it could offer help, right, is in financing of over a period of time, which we typically contain. Um right now, our policy is, when we go out and we set the interest rate, we do that in the final assessment. And typically, or or what we're doing, our current practice is, if we go out, we look at the market, it usually adds one percent. So if we can go out and can invest something for ten years, it's four and a half percent, and we set the rate at five. It's kind of in our process, right? And then just just so you're aware, because we're doing it in-house, so to speak, financing internally. We have a little more control there, right? Because if we were doing the way we used to do it. We go out, we do warrants, I guess it's the warrants probably be coming back anywhere from six and a half to eight percent right now. But one of the things that we looked at is we said, well, doesn't make sense for the city to make a policy that. We're just gonna set a fixed rate, we're gonna go in the market. And we're just gonna get the same benefit going forward to people that are participating in finance. And so just to kind of give you an idea, so I took the five and a half percent rate, I just plugged within it ten thousand dollars. And then you can see what their annual payment is going down from year one through ten of those invoices. So the total annual amount, which is all principal and interest, is about thirteen thousand.
Twenty five dollars. Um and then I also gave you the monthly, if you're interested in that. So then we took the same thing, and we said, well, what if the city council was to just say? You know what? It's okay that we potentially make less interest based on what the market is doing. And we just set a fixed rate of three and a half percent. And if you did that in this example at ten thousand dollars, you can see over the ten years, they would save about eleven hundred dollars. And so we're just saying that, you know, this is an option. Um I think it's a good option in that, you know, we're basically saying, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna help it be a little more feasible to pay for this over ten years. By understanding that, you know, we're gonna not be investing that money and making a higher interest. Um it's also important for you to understand that we back these uh debt service funds. With the general fund. And so, so when you say, well, where's the money coming from to be able to lend that money? It is backed by the general fund. And so. But what we do is, our policy is, when we close out an L I D that we've financed internally, which we're. We're getting close to that, where we might start doing that. Um. Our policy is whatever's left in that debt service fund. We go ahead and we move fifty percent of that back to the general fund as interest and fifty percent to streets. And the reason why we do the streets is it just helps with the program where we do participation for sidewalk and curb and gutter. So anyways, that's just the, just a thought um that you guys could consider that would help and quickly.
Any idea? Oh, please, please. Do you have any idea what percentage of uh of citizens? Finance their L I D or 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 pay for it upfront?
Yeah, I mean, Noah would probably know better, but I I think it's right around, we end up seeing at least fifty percent pay them off, right?
I think the first year, uh initially, it's fifty percent, but as time passes, most people will will pay off their L I D. It's pretty rare for people to wait the whole ten years.
Yeah, and I'll and I'll tell you why, most of the time, why. It it really depends on what the market is or the interest rate is in the market. Because if you see a huge decline in interest rates. In the next two years, everybody that's paying six, seven percent on their mortgage is gonna say, well, I'm gonna refinance. And then when you go refinance, the bank is going to say, you have to pay off that debt because we're not gonna have second position behind that L I D lead.
Quickly, just before we move off of 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 the lower rate, and so when I was looking at the suspended or reduced rate going through county minutes. Trying to look at discussions that other municipalities have had, one thing, uh to to counter that, I do think it's a good idea. But one reason to not completely ignore the market and just to say, why don't we just set it a half percent or just one percent? You don't want to incentivize somebody to not pay it off. For instance, if I have a car loan at seven percent and ours is less than one percent. Why would I ever pay this one off at one percent? I'll just throw all my money at paying that off for the eight 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 percent interest rate. And then just stretch this one out. And so there has to be a balance there.
Well, and what that does, right, is potentially that may limit in the future our ability to internally finance these. And you may end up having to go out and get warrants. And we know those rates are gonna be higher.
I was just gonna ask a question. Is there a distinction between what you said, uh Spencer, about suspending or reducing? A cost, a rate versus we're we're a lender here, could we consider loan forgiveness?
I would, I would think not, because it goes back into um. It's specifically, the statute specifically talks uh or prescribes a way to spread out payment. But does not give you a way to suspend payment. And so. I I don't see that being a part of the statute. I I so I think it would be, it it could create issues. Uh. I'd have to look into it more, but but. If it was to be contemplated in the statute, I think it would be there. And and so I I think that the fact that it says, it doesn't say, hey, you can lend them, there can be a repayment plan. That is up to the chief financial officer, and you can set a specific rate. But then doesn't mention and ultimately get rid of the payment if you deem fit, then just assume that you could do it could cause issues.
And I think it probably goes back to the same fact, right, that that they are getting a derived benefit.
That was those improvements. Every municipality, I I every single place that that, because I thought like. This, this can't be the first time that we that uh council members uh have discussed this throughout the state. I have not found one in the state of Idaho, one reduction uh plan, one forgiveness plan like that. And I think it's just because if you're going to utilize L I Ds, you have to follow the statute.
Sp- Spence, I have a question. Seems like. If we do come in and put the sidewalks, it's not there right now. And we take it a hundred percent, that's gonna open us up for the same type of thing of subsidizing that home compared to not the neighbors.
Great. And so it gets into a bigger term of unrich.
Uh, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Uh. What is the term that? Say it for me. There we go. He's gonna go to law school next year and he's gonna. Yeah.
That's why I'm thinking it does the exact same thing as what you just described on the, on trying to lower it's.
And so that isn't specifically talked about in any of the precedent cases. But it gets back to just assessment law. And assessment law is, they don't look at it as a tax. They look at it very much as this is a special gift that you are receiving, and you're receiving it. Because it's not so much about who is receiving it, it's about those who are not. They don't get it because the claim could be from the person not getting it. Well, you didn't get it because you didn't pay. They got more because they paid more. And that's pretty subtle in Idaho law with municipalities.
And.
And I'll cut to one more thing, sorry. And Matt and I have talked about this because there was even ideas thrown around, well, what if we just did? A a flat rate for everybody there, so it wouldn't impact others more than whatnot. That same case out of Moscow. The assessment must be reasonably proportional to the special benefit derived. Uh it doesn't require an assessment correspond exactly to the benefit received, but there has to be a proportional value uh associated with that benefit.
Go ahead.
So if we said, if we changed it to say that we were helping thirty percent, even for people who didn't have the sidewalk. Before, is that like a feasible move or is that not?
If it's tied, if it's tied, when we're talking sidewalk tied to L I Ds. Uh if it doesn't. The, when you look at the L I D statute, there are far more sections and def, far more sections and ways to claim the money than to forgive. Everything with that is all about what we can do as far as. Putting liens, reentering and foreclosing, there's nothing about special considerations given. And so the way I look at it is, if it's not there. I'm not gonna try to, I'm not going to advise to put in a special consideration to a statute that doesn't allow. And I would think that. Uh others were hesitant to do the same because Ada County Boise up north, up in. And I would think that others were hesitant to do the same, because Ada County Boise up north, up in Moscow, nobody's done it.
It's just hard, because I guess to me, I view it differently. If you buy a new home, then you, you're making that decision yourself, but if you don't have a sidewalk and the city comes and tells you you have to put a sidewalk in, that wasn't your choice. So, to me, I guess they're not comparable, because some people don't have the money to put in the new sidewalk, but they're making a decision to buy a new home. No one else see it like that. To me, that feels different.
I see what you're saying, I know what you're saying. But I think that the opposite side of that coin is when the people without the sidewalk bought that home, they paid a lower price because it didn't have those improvements there. So, that's where they saved that money.
Yeah, they probably couldn't afford the other thing, though, that's why they didn't buy it.
Yeah, you're probably right.
But when you do that, you, and, and I agree, and, and that would get into us then making assumptions. And when you create classes based on assumptions, because there's some of that millionaire next door mentality where they would say, hey, you can't just assume because they live here, they are in a, you can fit them in a subcategory that is treated differently, because then it gets into, it's more from a financial and not from a human rights, but it gets into a specific class that you're designating differently. And it gets into class discrimination, and that's when it can create some of that unjust enrichment theory. And so, that's kind of two parts removed from, that's a deeper analysis that could take place if it was challenged. There isn't a court just coming out and saying that, hey, you can't do this because of it. The most clear case that we have, talking about assessment law, is that case I previously mentioned.
So, worst case scenario, let's say I'm a low income person. You've replaced my sidewalk, or it wasn't there and you put it in, and the ten-year payment plan, I just ignore. What happens?
Yeah.
When you die, your house is.
We do.
A lien?
So after, so we, it already has a lien, so to speak, once we record the LID. But if it goes past to several years, then we do a treasures tax deed is what it's called. And the way, I mean, you can describe it different, I would just say it's a, maybe a little more powerful lien, if you will, that's specific to that.
Still a lien, though.
It's still a lien. And our policy internally has not been, I mean, the next step would be foreclose on the property. But our policy for decades has been that we're not going to foreclose on people.
The statute does speak specifically to foreclosure, where they say, it is the, if there are no other means, it is, it's kind of the matter, the last resort, and it even discusses it being, you know, if no other options are available, and it should be a rare occurrence that this would take place. So I do think that's where some discretion could come in. Now again, you don't want to just come out and invite people to not pay their bills. That's never a policy as a city we want to adhere to, but there is discretion, I think, given to finance to be able to say, hey, we're going to work with you, we're going to do these things. You have somebody who's not paying it, just to not pay it, and then we know that they have plenty other rental properties, and they're, you know, they, that could be different than the person that we know is in a position where they're doing the best they can.
And, and it's important to note that there are additional penalties and finance charges associated with that, right? If people don't make their payments. And we, I mean, we've had that happen, we've had it happen several times. And then eventually, in several cases I can think of, the owners have passed on, and then the home is, is probably went to their children, and we get a check at some point. The title company calls us and says, hey, what's the payoff on this? And then a check shows up, and then we close that LID account.
Thank you.
Okay. But in that case, interest would continue to.
Correct.
Could turn in over time.
Yeah, it can become a, you know, and, yeah, I mean, for sure, because, you know, when I first started twenty years ago, right, I remember specifically one of those that was going on, and it was maybe a couple thousand bucks, you know, initially, and they never made any payments on it. And then a decade later, they had to make that payoff, and I don't remember the exact amount, but it was substantially higher than two thousand dollars.
All my take on, on some of these things, and it goes back to choice, things that are available to municipalities to utilize. Courts typically look at like, look at this, hey, you chose to do this, if you're going to do it, follow the rules. So, nobody's telling you, you have to utilize LIDs, but if you're going to do it, if you're going to choose to utilize it, do it by state code. And that's kind of where we're at. We don't have to do it, but we're going to do it, we got to do it the right way.
So I guess, I mean, we don't have this as an action item, is that, just, do we want to just express our opinions as to, I mean, do we want to, you know, some of these choices that we had, reduce the interest rate to a flat rate, do we, do we want to? What are your thoughts on that, as far as what you want to do to, to put on a, if you want, if you want to put an agenda item on for a future meeting to be able to make some changes or?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see us do the thirty-five percent, okay?
Bump the thirty up to thirty-five.
And then do the flat rate.
Interest.
Three and a quarter, three and a half, whatever we come up with.
What are other thoughts on that?
That's a start. I, I don't know how anyone else feels, I mean, I thought the bills were hard for people when they were like five thousand dollars, and now some of them are crippled to fifteen thousand, and to me, I just, I am not comfortable with giving residents a fifteen thousand dollar bill. I, I think for a lot of residents, that's a hardship that I just don't agree with.
Can someone opt out of a LID?
Hmm, not really, no, because it's a, yeah, you're, you're doing the whole.
Is this an LID that we're establishing, or is this one that came in from the community? Because I know there's both, there's two ways to do it, right? The city can say, hey, we want to do one here, or two-thirds of a community or a neighborhood can say, hey, we would like to get this taken care of.
This is coming from us.
This is coming from us, I just want to make sure I'm clear. I'd like to explore the idea anyway, I mean, I don't have any hard and fast answers, but I like to explore the idea of, of putting in a little more, even if we have to flirt with the third rail of politics, one of them anyway. Is there a way to?
Yeah, well, I mean, we could do, I mean, like, we could cover the cost of the curb, you know, we could do these tiny increments if we chose to. I'm just saying, I know that the budget, we've seen the budget, but we do control the budget. So, we can adjust it if we decided that that's what we wanted to do. And I think that's something really important to remember, is that we actually control the budget.
Yeah, we do. And, I mean, you know, it's just, you know, you take from Peter and pay Paul, right? You know, you know, we take, take that amount out of the budget, it's something that we don't do over here, so, you know, that's just, and that's totally up to, up to the decision of what you, what you feel like you want to do. The one thing that you do have to be a little careful of, I think, in our considerations is, but, but you're right, you know, the costs have gone up to where it seems like they're kind of getting astronomical, but, but you know, you do have to be a little bit careful as you raise these amounts and stuff, because what about, you know, the person last year who maybe struggles a little on their payments too, and are in kind of the same situation, they're going, oh, wait a minute, I only got thirty percent, now you bumped it, you know, it is, it's kind of the fairness issue all over again. So you have to kind of keep that in mind too, are we, are we being more fair to these people and less fair to these people? You know, and so, you just, it's always that balance, right? Yeah, so. So anyway, I guess we're not really.
I don't think we're to the point of deciding right now, I do worry about these, these homeowners that, you know, the elderly, the widows, the ones that can't afford us at all. But I know that we can't play favoritism on back and forth, so I'm definitely would like to look at some more ways that we can possibly help in the form, but we know our budget's very tight. But then we come to the idea, but I think that some of the things we came up with is definitely workable.
Well, and I, and I think we're making some assumptions, there are, for some reason, on this particular LID, there in particular individuals that can't afford to do this. I think that's an assumption we're making, not, not based in fact.
I'm just using this from the last, the LID about two years ago.
You have, there are a lot of rental properties along there
Yeah.
that, you have, you have folks that, that, you know, are, are running properties as rentals. Who knows what their, what their, what their ability to pay is or not.
And, and keep in mind, when we talk about, this is something even for the Idaho State Legislature. Well, our local representatives, if it's important to you, say, hey, why don't we have a provision of this state statute that allows us to offer these subsidies? Because then, the classification, like it, so, so the classification that comes with a circuit breaker is designated by the state. And so, when it's set by the Idaho State, but, I mean, we'd absolutely apply that. But again, that's something that, it, we can't make state statute, and so, we have to comply by it. But let's, important to us, I think, there can be some voices that make a difference over there and make it a priority for our community.
In whatever direction the council wants to give us, the staff, I mean, we can, we can adjust and we can send out these to the council members, so you can see what that, that difference is.
I'd like to go back to that original spreadsheet, I can't remember what was.
Yeah, no, and that, and we can send that spreadsheet out to you and say, here's thirty-five percent, right? If we go off of Councilmember Walker's suggestion, right, here's what thirty-five percent looks like with all those, those homes in there. And then, the three percent would just be that, same thing, and we could put in, off to the side of that, what their payment, right? And would be on that, and so.
And the other option is, like you said, you know, we've, we've talked about this, this option too, and that is that, that, you know, the city pays for the, you know, we, we pay for the streets, obviously, but, but the city pays for the curb and gutter instead of sharing the cost of the curb and gutter, the city pays for the curb and gutter, and the homeowner is just responsible for the sidewalk. It'd be a hundred percent of the sidewalk. It, it kind of makes a little more sense to people, because a lot of the times people are like, well, yeah, that's my sidewalk, but it's really my curb and gutter, even, even though it is, it's in front of each one of our homes, right? But it just kind of seems like it makes sense to people a little bit more that way.
Could you add that to the spreadsheet?
I think that's on there.
Yeah, it's, it's on there, so, so yeah, I mean, these are things that we can, we can send out to you, and then that way you guys have a chance to look through it.
Yeah.
And, and I just want to say, it's not even just this LID that I have a concern with, it's that the prices have just been increasing in the past five years, and I think they're to a point where it's hard to.
Definitely have.
Yeah.
But, I mean, yeah, I mean, they have, it's, it's tough, it really is, I, but I, I remember, you know, I don't know, five or six years ago, when we did this one right over here, we had, you know, same thing, we had folks who were like, I, we just can't afford it. And, you know, they generally are able to figure out a way to do it and get it done, and but it's, you know, I'm not saying it's not a struggle for anybody. I've, I've been part of two of them, and they've both been a bit of a struggle for us at times too, so it's never easy, but anyway, all right, well, we will, we'll go ahead and send out that.
Oh, I got one question, so what are we going to tell the people next week on, on the question and answers thing, on next Wednesday?
So next Wednesday, right, that's when we have people coming in. Until a policy is changed, we're just going to tell them, here's what the current policy is, the city council's looking at different options. Would that be fair for us?
On that, until, no?
Well, not if, not if we want to move forward on the nineteenth with the, I mean, everything's kind of already been phased out in the public hearing. I mean, there's, there's always something, but it'd probably be just setting that, because the way I look at that meeting on the twelfth is kind of an open house. We'll just have boards up and people can come in, we'll have a discussion, it won't be a, a sit-down meeting like that, it would just be an open house where they can come in, they can ask questions, and then say, well, here's, here's the current policy, and here's what's on your letter, right? Because we sent out what those costs are with our current policy. They have those costs, and that, that's what we would discuss.
So we just tell them they could change.
Yeah, I mean, if, I mean, we could say that the city council's looking at it, what option they have available, it wouldn't change. Well, I just, I wouldn't say that, these are estimates. So, depending what that comes back at, but the policy could change. So I don't, I don't ever want to presuppose and say, oh, this is what is, where they're actually estimates at this point. So that's, we got to be kind of careful with that.
And it is a possibility that we could have an action item and make changes to this LID.
Yeah, so you could, I mean, yeah, any, at any time, you could change kind of what percentages or, or how you want to navigate that. So that's, that's something that could be done, until we send out the bills, actual bills on that, right now, we've only sent out estimates. And so until we send that out, I think there's an opportunity there.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, that, we will call the work meeting over. Let's just take, before we start our city council meeting, let's take a quick, maybe just a three-minute break. If anyone needs to use the restroom or anything, we'll take a break real quick and we'll be right back. All right, welcome, everybody, thank you for your indulgence. Don't want anybody to be in pain here, so we take just a little break in between those meetings, so, thank you. And we will get going on our city council meeting for March fifth of twenty twenty-five for the Rexburg City Council. We'd like to start with an opening prayer, I've asked Councilmember Reeser to offer that for us, following which I've asked Councilmember Eric Erickson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. That's my brother, sir.
Our dear Father in heaven, we're grateful this time to have the opportunity to meet together and to discuss the needs of our community. Father, we're grateful for this wonderful place and the good people that live here, and ask thou, please, inspire us and bless us with thy spirit, that we might be able to make wise decisions, that we might be able to remember those that are here and listen to them, and also remember those that are not here, and, and take their concerns into, in, into mind as well. Father, we're so grateful for all the blessings that thou hast bestowed upon us, and we ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We just finished a work meeting where we talked about local improvement district policies, and we'll be talking about that more as, as the next couple of weeks come up. We will be having an open house, we will make an announcement here, just so everybody knows. Next Wednesday, the twelfth of March, we will have an open house here where we will have some displays where people can come in and talk to different, you know, just look at the different things that tell a little bit about LIDs and how they work, and, and so that people can understand them better, and we'll have some staff members here to be able to answer questions and things, so that will be next Wednesday at, we doing that at seven o'clock, Alan, do you remember? I think it's next Wednesday at seven o'clock, I believe. Did anybody hear that? Oddly enough, I didn't, I don't even remember, we talked about a start timing for that, but what is it, five o'clock?
On the twelfth.
Five o'clock, oh yeah, it's, it's more like a work meeting kind of a thing, so, yeah, five o'clock. Well, that's five o'clock, thank you, appreciate that. All right, five, yeah, okay, thank you. Let's go ahead with the roll call of the council members, please, Mary.
Here.
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 All right, thank you very much, everyone, for being here. Item number four on the agenda is a time for public comment, this is a time for things that are not listed on the agenda. We'd love to hear from you, if you've got something you'd like to tell us, and we would ask you to come up to the microphone here and limit your comments to three minutes or less if possible. And we've got, it looks like we've got several ready to go here, so you go ahead first and, and we'll move on.
Do you like my name and my address?
Yes, please, thank you.
Mayor Earl, six zero two Autumn Court in Rexburg.
Thank you.
Thank you for the chance today. Just want to make you aware of the, the creation and the opening of a community nonprofit Rexburg Soup Kitchen. Will be opening in early April at the VFW Hall. And will be open for three months until the county kicks this out with the, with the county fair, and then we'll resume operations in the fall. This is a community-sponsored nonprofit, we will not be taking state or federal money so that we can offer a free meal service to anyone without regard to income level or pre-qualification, pre-registration. I invite you all to the ribbon cutting being organized by the Chamber of Commerce on April one, and our first full weekly service will commence on April second. If I could, I've got some input with regard to the proclamation on volunteerism and having heavily dependent on volunteers to run this, this soup kitchen. Um and having uh heavily dependent on volunteers to run this uh this soup kitchen. Um just make some like to make a recommendation on some of the wording in this proclamation. As I've worked with several different organizations over the past couple of months to organize volunteers. Um I see a little bit of reticence with with some of in our community with regard to Just Serve. Um now, I'm a big proponent of Just Serve. I have over twenty projects on there right now to, but um in the way that the wording is right now. Uh this proclamation commits to promoting volunteerism, leveraging Just Serve. And I'd like to maybe recommend that we change some wording to to leveraging platforms like Just Serve. There are some in our community who feel like Just Serve is a is a front door or a back door to a proselytizing effort or or a church run a program. Uh and so I've I've been asked to create alternate platforms for volunteers sign up and and assignments. Um just so that people are not forced to or required to go to Just Serve. Now, again, I'm a big proponent of Just Serve. It's a great platform for managing volunteers and projects. But just uh responding to some of the sensitivities that I've seen and heard, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. When is what time is that open house or that ribbon cutting?
Uh noon. You know, on April one at the V F W Hall.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mister uh city attorney, Mister Rammel. If we we've got this proclamation in front of us tonight. If we were to make that change where it says in this proclamation, it says Rexburg, Idaho, the city of Rexburg commits to promoting volunteerism, leveraging, it says leveragingjustserve.org. But if we were to say leveraging platforms such as justserve.org and others to make it easier. Do you do you see any issue with that? But what are your thoughts, Deborah? Do you?
That's fine, but we're just not just making our.
That's kind of my feeling too. I think that would probably be fine. Okay, I'll just make those notes here. We'll get to that point. So, okay. Thank you, Mister Merrill. We appreciate your comments. Next, yeah.
My name's Keith Wilding. I live at two thirty Harvard Avenue. And I like to put forth the the city in that they consider a uh traffic pattern change on one of their intersections. The intersection I'm talking about is uh east, north, east second, north. And East Moody Road. Or uh everybody knows it better as the Walmart intersection. During heavy traffic times. The traffic on Moody Road goes out. Moody Road is a two lane. One westbound, one eastbound with a a turn lane to get on to Second East. Uh Second East has been developed now to where it's a four lane road. And uh with heavy traffic coming from Walmart as of now. The turn lane, the left hand turn lane is backed up so far that it congests. The parking coming out of the Walmart parking lot and also coming across Moody Road to the newer development on the other side. I see where this is just gonna, when Winko goes in and is built out there, it's going to exacerbate the problem. All I'm suggesting is the westbound lane on Moody Road. Not only having a turn, a left hand turn lane, but the the westbound lane can make be optional to be a left hand turn also. So you have left two left hand turn lanes going on to uh Second East. Uh just guessing, I'd say ninety five percent of the traffic that comes out of there wants to turn on Second East. There's very few cars that go straight across that intersection to the west. And maybe uh one or two or very few that goes north on Second East. Which also could be taken care of by the other roads coming out of the Walmart parking lot. I think if you do this, it'll it'll help the traffic flow more better in that area. Better in that area until something else has to be done or whatever. Maybe that will solve the problem of everything.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. We appreciate that. We have just uh for information, we have actually talked about that. Because we've noticed that we do get some backups there. And uh and I don't know, Keith, is there any uh? I know we've talked about trying to get a grant to widen that and stuff, but is is there anything that we can, I don't know, is there anything we can do? Before that comes through to to make that?
Yeah, I wasn't, you know, privy to what we need, what actually needs to be done there. But I think even the painting, the the lines where you can give a an optional turn. There, I don't know for sure what would have to be done with the signal system or whatever.
So the uh, because let's see, there's a left turn lane and a middle lane and a right turn lane? Am I thinking right?
There is two lanes, east and westbound, with the turn lane in the middle. The westbound lane.
So so if we were to if we were to make the the next lane over else, an optional lane to either go straight or go left, is kind of what you're suggesting.
Either.
Yeah, yeah.
Either way, option to do everything just so you can get it an option to to make it a left hand lane also.
Keith, I'm just curious, what's the width of Moody there? Yeah, curb curb to curb. So we have enough for four. We could paint four lanes there then.
But you're right, it is just going to get worse when they when the Winko store goes in there. The one good thing, well, that won't really make any difference coming out, though, is there is going to be a road where they people can turn in. Go into Winko so they won't have to, but but that's the opposite movement, so that's not really going to help, you know, people coming out. So it's just going to get worse, you're right.
Yeah, the main artery artery in there is Second East. I can say most of your traffic, just an observation, I'd say ninety ninety five percent of your traffic wants to make that.
Left, yeah. Yep, I usually am and pretty much everybody else is too, right? Okay, we'll 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 take a look at that some more and see if there's anything we can do. In the meantime, so that'd be good. Thank you. Appreciate that observation. All right, is there anyone else who would like to make a make us aware of anything who would like to speak? Anyone? Anybody online? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we will move on then to item number five, which is our public hearing. Or the proposed Idaho Department of Commerce for an Idaho Community Development Block Grant in the amount of two hundred and forty five thousand dollars for the Tabernacle Civic Center. So uh this is is this is a a proposal. To, let's see, this is this, Matt, this is to apply for this grant, right? This isn't to receive it, if I'm thinking right. Oh, yes, please, Tacey. Yeah, let's go ahead and have you speak right now and fill us in on this. That would be awesome.
Just really quick, again, I'm Tacey Stoddard with Altera Community Community Consulting. And we're helping assisting the city with um this grant application. So I just wanted um certain information we have to provide. We did have the um application available as well as the grant application manual, in case anybody wants to look at that. Um it's um funding for this this program, the block grant program, comes to the state of Idaho through the um U S Department of Housing and Urban Development, so through HUD. And um just would ask that the city would take comments if there if there be any for five, up to five days um after this hearing and that they would be responded to in writing for fifteen working days if it's practical. Uh so just to explain the project. It's um the funding opportunity will allow for the um Rexburg Tabernacle Civic Center to um get a new HVAC system. Um the proposed budget is um two hundred and forty five thousand of the C D B G public facility. Or I'm sorry, not public facility for funds, the community center funds. Um which would include and then additionally, six hundred and sixteen thousand of city cash and seventy five hundred dollars of city in kind. For a total project cost of eight hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred. Um the project schedule, if it's awarded, the city would plan to hopefully complete the design and begin construction in the fall of twenty twenty five with project completion in the spring of twenty twenty six. Of um the proposed business fisheries are all the residents of the city of Rexburg, including um low and moderate income residents. Um and with that, if anybody has any questions about this.
Anyone have any questions for Tacey on this?
Tacey, just real quick, excuse me, is this money already in the state's possession?
I believe so. I believe it's money that's already allocated. I I I would think that they would say there's no more opportunity and not let us even do an application if the state hadn't already been allocated the funding.
Okay, that's semi comforting, huh?
So could you repeat what the match to this is?
Um the match is six hundred and sixteen thousand, which includes some of the design. I think it's twenty one thousand five hundred, which is the purchase order for for the um HVAC mechanical design. So that includes some of that and the rest would be construction.
Do we have that in the budget?
Yeah, let me address that. So we 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 talked about this a little bit, I think, maybe a month ago. But uh so in the budget, we have three hundred and fifty thousand in this fiscal year right now. Um more than likely, Tacey kind of alluded to that, we probably couldn't do this project fall of next year. And so this is something that we would have to rebudget, if you will. And so this is going to be in the budget process as we go through that over the next few months. And then a couple of other revenue sources for this. Um one of the things, obviously, that we've been doing is we have a a campaign, right? To raise contributions for the Tabernacle. And so that is a potential other source that could go towards that six sixteen. Um and then the other thing that we're we're honestly hopeful for is that the bids wouldn't actually come in this high. We are looking at ways to reduce that, right, to get that cost down. But but yeah, I certainly think that it's going to take more than the three fifty when it comes back. And so that's going to be a decision that you guys can look at as we go through that budget process.
Okay, any other questions? Yes.
So then how long do we have to use? If we got the grant, how long would we have to use it? I'm sorry, if you said that, I can't remember.
They usually, even even like, you know, we have a project schedule, but that that can be kind of flexible and adjustable. So um usually Department of Commerce likes to use it within two years, but I've seen them extend it longer if needed. They they usually like to work with communities really well, depending on the project.
But then so so if we vote for this, we're and if we get it, then we're kind of committing to like six hundred thousand dollars possibly.
That that's kind of.
Yes, although if we didn't, if we didn't have it, I mean, you know, this, I guess, this the option to spend the money back would always be there if we couldn't come up with it for some reason and decided not to do anything, but that's.
Be out the match for the.
It it's pretty unlikely that, yeah, that that would.
And we're, I mean, we're, some of these expenses, obviously, have already happened or in the works, right? Like, so the design, that twenty one thousand five hundred, we're going to pay that probably next month. And so we'll be out some of that, right?
And there there's more than enough cash match in this. That if if, you know, the the estimates, you know, later on were are less or the bids come in less, like the Department of Commerce would be flexible on that too. Like, they probably would not, you know, they wouldn't say you had to commit all of that money, no matter what. If if you're, if you went that put that out for bid and ends up being only like maybe six hundred thousand instead of eight hundred thousand, then they would they wouldn't say, no, you have to put in the eight hundred thousand that, you know, that would be looked at and we'd in a budget amendment done. If you if you two get the grant.
Yeah, and I, as I, as I come back to you, right, we should know by, I think, did you say by first of May, we'd know on this one?
I think it's or like around in June sometime.
June, maybe. So we'll, I mean, we're going to have to make some assumptions as we look at the twenty twenty six budget. And so one of those assumptions would be this grant. Other assumptions would be the fundraising. Which, I mean, we have fundraised, I think, what did I tell you? We were up to.
Forty forty three.
Forty three thousand or something that we have in that right now. And then we do have some other big things we're working on, uh like a concert and some other things that could potentially bring in some pretty high contributions. And so so we'll bring you in the budget process, kind of how that would work, how we would pay for that. And then it's important to note that we do actually, like, some of the money is already in that fund. We've been carrying it over for multiple years and adding to the savings for that. And so this last year, instead of doing, you know, setting aside fifty thousand, we may have to come to you and say, we need two hundred thousand if you want to do this project and get it done. And so so that'd be part of the discussion.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, then I would, oh, let's see, we got to do the public hearing first. So, yeah, thank you, Tacey. We appreciate that information. Thank you very much. So the the public hearing then would be if anyone has comments either in the positive or the neutral or the negative towards applying for this grant, you know, going ahead with the application. This grant from the Department of Commerce. So we'll go ahead and open that public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to uh testify in the positive about this proposal, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Uh seeing none, is there anyone that would like to speak in the neutral position on this proposal? If there's no one for a neutral testimony, then is there anyone who would like to testify against this proposal? Okay, seeing none, we will declare this public hearing closed. And um at this time, I would entertain a motion to move forward with this particular action item.
Mister Mayor, I saw that we that we, see, what is it? Do we accept the?
Uh that we go ahead and.
That we go ahead and do the the application for the grant.
Yeah, yeah, apply for this grant, right? That's kind of what we're talking about, right? Yeah, okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Second by council member Chambers. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Thank you. We will go ahead and move forward with that application. Thank you. Let's see, I need to sign that, don't I? Is that this one? All right. Thank you for being here. We appreciate that information. All right, let's move on to item number six, which is our staff reports. We'll start with our public workshop by Mister Keith Davidson. We have a surplus item to talk about.
Right, thank you, Mayor. So this surplus item is from the Gulf Horse. It's a side mower uh that they no longer need. And so they're looking at surplusing that item. So we're just seeking council's approval for that surplus.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, just a quick question. Could this be adapted to a It's a three point hitch, isn't it?
Um, yeah, yeah, with a P T O driven. I don't know if a skid steer has a P T O drive on them.
Oh, it's P T O. It's not.
Yeah, so you can see that. Yeah, so you can see that PTO shaft on it.
Okay, sorry. Just curious.
Yeah.
Any other questions about this item? We actually did talk about this in staff meeting if uh if that could be used on any of our other tractors and stuff and it we already have one actually that we use on our John Deere tractor that matches up with it that that we use to reach over fences and mow things. So so we really don't need this one, right?
Yeah, in our our street department, we have one that has an articulating arm, so we have a lot more movement that we can do with it. This is primarily just sits off to the side of the tractor and doesn't have that articulation hydraulics with. And this one, we just mentioned it, it's really not. Yeah, it's only a few years old. It's just, it's not worked for the application that they thought it would. And so they they are, they're needing to get a little different mower to really do what they need to. And so they thought, why do why would we hold on to this? We reached out to the county.
It's really a matter of it. It really doesn't work very well for us and it's fairly new, so let's see what we can get out of it while it is still fairly new and in good condition before it just sits around and it's worse, right?
Yeah, and we and we reached out to the county as well. I haven't heard back to see if if they are interested in it as well, because they're really fifty percent owners of it.
Yeah, and we can, you know, just double check with them to make sure before we sell it off to somebody else. Anyway, so uh do I hear a motion to go ahead and surplus this item?
Mayor, I'll make that motion to surplus this side mower.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Reeser. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. We will go ahead and list it up after we check, double check with the county, right? Okay, all right.
Thanks.
Okay, our finance report. Mr. Matt Nielsen.
Yeah, so I I don't have too much tonight. Um, I'll just uh just want to give you a quick reminder that um not this Friday, but the following Friday, so March fourteenth at noon, uh we will do our audit reports or auditors are coming. They're going to go over the fiscal year twenty four. Don't feel like you have to come to it, uh but I did send an invite to everybody just now. I added you to the invite. Um, but it is a public meeting, so it 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 doesn't matter how many of you do or don't come, if that makes sense.
And the audit report meetings are very exciting. You'd probably want to be here.
It's a very exciting meeting, so I'm doing this.
It's one of the most exciting meetings for finance.
All right. Okay. All right, we will move on then to item number seven A, which is to ratify this proclamation. And we will just adjust it just a little bit here, but this is proclamation number twenty twenty five dash oh one, which is a commitment to volunteerism in the city of Rexburg. And it reads as follows, whereas we firmly believe that the values of compassion, empathy, and community support are the foundation of united harmonious society and fosters connections that transcend differences. And whereas the strength and prosperity of our cities, towns and villages are based in the selflessness of its residents to serve and uplift one another. And whereas we acknowledge the profound impact that can be achieved when we extend a helping hand to our neighbors, especially those of diverse backgrounds and lifting them up and collectively working to improve lives. And whereas we nurture a culture of giving within our cities, emphasizing that volunteerism is not just a duty, but a source of personal fulfillment and community strength. And as we work side by side with and learn from each other, mutual understanding increases. Misconceptions can be corrected and new friendships are built. And whereas we urge all citizens to care for one another, volunteer and engage in acts of service and kindness that contribute to our city's betterment and its inhabitants' well being, regardless of background or belief. And whereas the city of Rexburg has joined a growing list of supporters, including the president of the National League of Cities and hundreds of leaders to date in making a commitment to volunteerism. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, I Jerry Merrill, Mayor of Rexburg, Idaho, that the city of Rexburg commits to promoting volunteerism, leveraging platforms like JustServe.org to make it easier for residents to find and engage in volunteer opportunities and will regularly acknowledge and celebrate the contributions of volunteers. So we can sign this if you uh if you would like to ratify this proclamation. Is there any discussion about that before we go ahead with ratification? Sorry. Any comments or questions about this? We did, I did have a meeting just so that just so that you know, kind of the background where this is coming from. I had a meeting with the representatives of JustServe.org uh last week and uh they asked if we would like to become a JustServe.org city or a JustServe city. And I told them that I would like to and I would throw that out there to you to to uh see what your your thoughts are. Um, and that that's kind of that they they needed this proclamation to be done before. If that's kind of their process is we do a proclamation and then they they write up a thing that says we are an official JustServe.org city. It's not like any kind of contract or anything. It's just kind of how it's just their process of how they do it. Yes.
That change in language won't change.
For them.
Serves view of.
I don't think so, but we'll check with them first and let them know. I I don't think it will. I think they'll be okay with it, just kind of from the way the conversation was going. Uh, because they are, you know, they are uh very sensitive to the fact that, you know, they don't want this to feel like it's just coming from one religious denomination. They want Just Serve to be a platform that, you know, anybody can get on and use and uh, but I don't think they would have any problems with promoting other platforms as well. So I think we're probably good. We will check with them, right? Is that you think so, Brett? No, thank you. I appreciate you being here to to uh give another, to give a thumbs up on that. Brett was actually in that meeting with us the other day, so we appreciate him. Okay, uh if there is no other comments or questions, then I would entertain a motion to go ahead and ratify proclamation twenty twenty five dash oh one. This is the first one of this year.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we ratify proclamation twenty twenty five dash oh one.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes and we will uh notify them that we have done that proclamation. All right, item number eight on our agenda is a a second reading. We have uh ordinance number thirteen twenty eight, which is the rezone of four West Moody Road from light industrial to medium density residential two. Uh, this is an item that we have discussed and voted on once. Is there any discussion on this item before we move forward on it as a second reading?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I as I as I looked at this, leaving last week, is there a reason why they didn't rezone all the way up to the freeway?
Mr. Parkinson.
Uh, reason behind that was they made it later for a change. They're coming in and they're going to flat that that they're rezoning now as a separate property from the one.
Okay.
That makes sense.
It just seemed unusual that they would not rezone the whole thing all the way. Okay.
Hey, any further questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to consider bill or ordinance number thirteen twenty eight, second read.
Mr. Mayor, I would uh move that we consider ordinance number thirteen twenty eight, second read.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Council President Walker. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll consider that second read and move it to the third reading calendar. Right, item number nine is a consent calendar, which is includes items which require formal city council. Uh, let's see, yeah, which wait. These things are all together. Yeah, typically routine. Okay, sorry, that that when I read that, I think that's been on there before, but for some reason that kind of threw me. I was thinking that uh it doesn't take. So they are items that are typically routine, not of great controversy. Individual council members may ask that any specific item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion in greater detail. Explanatory information is included in the city's council's agenda packet regarding these items if anyone has any questions on any specific items. Okay, so that includes the minutes from the February nineteenth, twenty twenty five meeting and the approval of the city of Rexburg bills. Does anyone have any questions or comments about either of these items or anything else in the consent calendar? If there is none, I would uh uh entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion to approve the consent calendar minutes and pay our bills.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion on that item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. We will go ahead and pay the bills and enter the minutes. Item number ten on the agenda is a uh a a motion to uh move into executive session as per Idaho statute, state statute seventy four dash two oh six one J to consider labor contract matters authorized under section seventy four, two oh six A, one A and B in the Idaho code. Um, so we do need a roll call vote, but I would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I saw move that we move that we move into executive session.
Thank you, and we need a roll call vote on that item. Mariana, please.
Need a second?
Oh, we need a second, yeah, sorry. Who would like to second that? Councilmember Chambers seconds it, so now we need a roll call vote. Councilmember Chambers, yeah.
Yes.
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 All right, the vote is unanimous. We will move into executive session, which means that we will we will ask those of you who are here who are not invited to the executive session to to please leave the room at this point in time. We will reconvene after executive session uh to do item number eleven and twelve. But uh you can you can either come back for that time or or not, whichever you'd prefer. So uh we will we'll move into executive session in the front conference room at this time.